I will call the Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P. M. Seven oh one P. M. One minute behind. Please stand for the pledge allegiance if you are.
(inaudible).
Item one A, official meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by the communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those in news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. And item B, roll call, sitting in for clerk. Barney is going to be our vice president, Eric Brown.
Ewer.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Barney, absent, excused.
Loth.
Here.
Medved, absent, excused.
Pollock.
Here.
And Higginbotham.
Here.
Thank you. Item two, approval of agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Mr. Pollock with the motion, Miss Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item three, reports. Three A, district administrator update, Dr. Chris Reuter.
Thank you. As we can, we're now starting the fall season, or ending the fall sports season, we had some great performances by many of our teams and individuals in the state, in state competitions. I'd like to give a great shout out to our boys volleyball team who finished just short of the state championship. They made it to the final four, losing to Hamilton, but had a great season, and should be proud of the great work they did. Our girls swim team placed this last week second and fourth in different relay events, and congratulations to Julia Saxman, who also was individual state champ in swimming, and to Finn Langley, who competed again at the highest level in dive, and came up short of being back-to-back state champion, but placed in, in the top three. So, congratulations to all those great athletes and students and the work they've done. Tonight, you'll see in the agenda, we've outlined two key new business items, one related to strategic planning, and the work that the administration wants to move forward with, with consent of the board, to set a vision and course for the school district over the next three years, so that we know where we're going, what we're doing, how to communicate that to the community, and most importantly, how to hold ourselves accountable to some key performance indicators. So, we'll talk more about that in new business, as well as, Mr. Ewer and Ms. Alendorf, we'll discuss tonight an ad hoc committee, as we are ready to go back to RFP after three years, for transportation and what that committee could look like. This week, we had Johnson Nursery on site with Mr. McKellen at the high school to kind of look through with Mr. Smith, the, the progress of the courtyard project. We've got a lot of great, we've got doors, we've got access, we've got security. So, the first phase, because of Johnson Nursery's generous donations the last couple of years, the courtyard's looking great, and there's a plan now for the next pieces that are incorporated in that as well. And if anyone in the community or the board is available, nine forty-five on the twentieth, we will have our fall semester GHS academic awards here at the P.A.C. So, anyone that can, is able to attend, we'd love to have you there to honor our students for their academic excellence. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Item B, three B, student representative report.
Amy Bell ended October with our monthly Belfast. We were introduced to three superheroes. These heroes helped us review our three school rules of be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. We also held an election the week of November fourth, where students had the opportunity to vote for their favorite book character. Dogman was the champion over Gerald the Elephant. At County Line this November, we had several special events that brought joy and learning to our County Line community. To celebrate student achievements, we held a festive blow lunch that recognized hard work and respectful comments. Our third graders took an enriching trip to the Milwaukee Art Museum and Symphony, experiencing hands-on learning in the arts. Halloween was a fun-filled day with creative costumes and activities that engaged staff and students alike. We also came together for our November Comic Code Assembly, where we highlighted our core values and celebrated students who exemplify them. It's been a month of meaningful experiences that celebrate the growth for our confidence. MacArthur staff and students have been focusing on gratitude for our value word this month. Our monthly assembly focused on ways we show and receive gratitude in our daily lives. One way we are showing gratitude to the members of our community is by giving back through participating in an all-school food drive. The PTA partnered with MAC leaders to host a bingo night, organized the Fall Book Fair, and are offering spelling bee practices for third through fifth graders in preparation of the all-school spelling bee in December. Lastly, MacArthur is thrilled to announce that our school has achieved three consecutive years of growth, as recognized by the state report card. This accomplishment reflects our entire school's community, school community's commitment, hard work, and resilience, from our talented teachers and dedicated staff, to our amazing students and supportive families. We are energized to continue this path of growth and success. There are many exciting events going on at Rockfield Elementary this November. On the seventh, our third graders visited GHS to watch a performance of the play The Little Mermaid. November twenty-first marks the day that our first graders will take a trip out to the Mequon Nature Preserve, and on the twenty-fifth, our fourth graders will be taking a trip to the Milwaukee Public Museum. Our PTA has also been working hard, hosting a very successful Rocktober celebration, offering spelling bee practices in the library during recess, and setting up an upcoming dine and donate event at Stags. Rockfield's Word of the Month is gratitude, emphasizing to our learners the importance of choosing to appreciate the people and things in our lives. Many exciting activities are beginning for the Kennedy Crusaders, with lots for students to choose from. Boys' basketball and wrestling have both begun their seasons, and Shrek Junior musical rehearsals are underway this month. Sign-ups for the Ski and Snowboard Club have opened. Additionally, KMS will be participating in the spelling bee again this year. Our PTA has also set up a fundraiser at the Chipotle in Menominee Falls on November nineteenth from seven to eight P. M. The first quarter of the school year has come to a close at GHS. In the past month, both our boys volleyball team and our girls swim and dive team advanced to compete at the state level. Boys volleyball fought hard to make it to the semifinal round. Girls swim and dive had a great meet and placed sixth overall, with just five swimmers and two divers competing. With the first quarter of school coming to a close, we will be celebrating our students' academic achievements with an academic award ceremony during resource on November twentieth. We also held a signing ceremony on November thirteenth for our student athletes who will be pursuing their sports at the next level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move to item C, County Line Elementary School presentation, Ms. Kelly Schultz. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here today. I'm going to start off by introducing the County Line team. You can see you have a big team back here, so first, we want to thank the fifth graders for being here, so if I call your name, please stand up. A.J., A.J., again. Era, we have Annabelle, Aubrey, and Audrey. So, thank you for coming, and then we have our fifth grade teachers, Mrs. Suva, Mr. Niles, and Mr. Bauer. We have our four K, Mrs. Barrett, first grade, Mrs. Ernstur, and our reading specialist, Mrs. Farady. So, we're going to get started with, on our next slide, you can see our County Line goal, and so, tonight, we're here to show with, share with you different ways that we reach our action steps through this goal of at least sixty-five percent of our County Line students meeting their projected growth on MAP ELA assessment. There's many ways that we do this through action steps, like our trip to Uppam Woods, as well as different ways through the Wonders curriculum and the four K learning, so I'm excited to share that with you tonight. All right, so my third grade friends, here to come up. So, if you go to the next slide, we'll share a little bit about our Uppam Woods trip.
Good evening, everyone. I hope all of you are doing good. Today, me and my classmates would like to share Uppam Woods experiences with you. Uppam Woods was an amazing field trip. We went there October eighth to tenth, so it was three days and two nights of fun. Uppam Woods is located just outside the Wisconsin Dells. I think that County Line fifth graders are so lucky to be the only school to go on this learning adventure. Here are my fellow classmates to fill you in on all of their fun experiences.
Hi, my name is Auden, and I'm from Ms. Schnaz's class. Peanut Butter Mountain was full of fun and adventures. We needed to work as a group in order to accomplish a task. One task we needed to accomplish took place on a plank or wooden board. Everyone would line up to get lined up shoulder-to-shoulder on the board. Then, we would need to find a way to get lined up alphabetically by last names, without falling off. This specific one is my favorite, because this one was full of laughter, classmates, and group communication. But in order to complete this challenge, would, it would take communication and listening. Thank you, Ms. Schnaz, for leading it. Archery was a whole lot of fun, too. We were given the opportunity to shoot nine arrows in all. It was such a cool experience for me and everyone else. We were very lucky, because not all kids are given that opportunity to do this, something like this. All of us lined up and shot an arrow. Some people got a bullseye, and other people were very close. I was one of the people who almost got it. It was very exciting. The trick to being a good shooter is hand-eye coordination. Hand-eye coordination is when your eyes and hands match up in line. Shout out to Mr. Bauer, who taught us all about shooter safety.
Scale, Skids, and Skins was a great learning experience and exciting opportunity. In Scale, Skids, and Skins, we learned about different reptiles and amphibians. Eventually, we sorted some of the facts about the amphibians and reptiles into a Venn diagram. My group put most of the facts in to the right part. We also got to hold a painted turtle named Larry. Another thing we did was hold the sheddings of a snake. There were three other turtles we got to see. There were box turtles and a snapping turtle. There were also two frogs we got to see. Shout out to the naturalists for letting us hold some of the different turtle shells. Canoeing was amazing, too. It's fun to work with a person that I don't usually work with. Shout to my partner for working with me. Canoeing taught me teamwork and communication skills. We got to canoe down part of the Wisconsin River. It was like gym class outdoors. I took breaks, I appreciated the beauty of the Dells and nature. I liked that we did canoeing, because it was like experiencing nature in a way I haven't before.
Hi, my name is Aubrey from Mrs. Suva's class. Pond Studies was a very exciting class. First, we put on boots or waders. Then, we went into the creek, which was a very cool experience. We went into the creek, then we scooped up the little bug with nets. Next, we went back to class to try to identify them. I found this cool-looking bug that looked like it was living inside of a pine cone. We learned that many species have adaptations. Adaptations are when a creature needs to adapt to its new environment. Shout out to Mrs. Suva for being an excellent Pond Studies teacher. The campfire was super fun. All three fifth grades came together to sing and have a blast. It was like music class outdoors. Shout out to our chaperones for making those delicious s'mores. Also, shout out to Mrs. Beeman for teaching us the camp songs.
Amazing Race was a team-building activity, where we worked together to complete a task. Each group got clues to figure out where to go, sometimes got riddles to complete the activities. You had to find the clues before the other groups, because it was a race. Whoever had the most would win. Shout out to the chaperones and naturalists for helping guide us. This one hike we did was in the dark, and it was so cool to hear all of, all the animals and sounds of the night. We got to see constellations in the sky and learn about some of them. We did some fun activities at the end, where we bit into a lifesaver in her mouth to make a flash. We also went on a longer hike to a cool sandstone cave and learned of how trees grew, grew on the edge of the cliff. We were taught other cool, cool things about na, nature, and we got to go in a mini cave that had a big opening where, and eventually, in, you had to crawl through. That was so cool. Shout out to the Uppam Woods staff for being great guides.
My name is A.J. from Mr. Bauer's class. Survival Skills was very fun, and we learned many skills, like how to light a fire with flan steel, and how to make a shelter with long logs. The naturalists also discussed what our things are important when lost in the wilderness. They also told us there was a birch tree nearby, and we could use the bark from the ground. Shout out to the naturalists for teaching us cool skills if ever lost in the woods. We had the opportunity to eat all our meals while at Uppam Woods, family-style, sharing the food with our table. Each group had a job for a couple of the meals, setup, hopper, and cleanup. It was important to be on time for setup, showing responsibility. The hopper got and handed out the food. Manners were important at every meal. The students also cleaned up after each meal. Scrapper would scrape the plates to help out the kitchen. The food was pretty good, too, so shout out to the Uppam Woods cook.
Now, we have quite a few thank yous that we'd like to share with you. A huge thank you goes to the Germantown School Board for letting us go on this adventure, and another thank you to the County Line PTA for covering our transportation costs to and from Uppam Woods. We are also grateful to Mrs. Schultz and her outstanding office staff for helping with the logistics. A shout out to Mrs. Beeman for teaching us some fun camp songs to sing around the campfire, which is really fun. We are thankful to the chaperones for taking time off to be part of our Uppam Woods adventure. And lastly, a big, big, big thank you to our fifth grade teachers, Mr. Niles, Mrs. Suva, and Mr. Bauer, for planning, preparing, and organizing this trip. County Line fifth graders had made unforgettable memories on this amazing camping field trip. Thank you for allowing us to share today.
Great job, fifth grade. Thank you so much. Moving into a little bit about our English Language Arts through Wonders, we're going to start it out with our four K. Mrs. Barrett would like to tell you where it all begins at County Line, starting in four K.
Hi. Okay. I can talk to children all day long, but this is very overwhelming. So, in four K, we do not, we're not doing the Wonders program, but we are building a strong foundation for them to move forward through their career, so in order to be a successful reader, a lot of components have to come together that we work on in four K. So, we're building the foundation through things like teaching letter recognition and letter sounds. We work on phonemic awareness, which is hearing how sounds work and noticing how they affect words. And then, every day, engaging students in read-alouds, that provides them the opportunity to see how books work. We model how we read with expression, and we're building background knowledge, which is extremely important for them to be able to be good readers in the future. With background knowledge, every day, we engage the children in purposeful play, so it's not just playing just to play. Play provides students with so many background experi, experiences to build upon, learn background knowledge, so that they are able to know more about what they're reading in the future. Playing helps to develop their brains, the prefrontal cortex, which helps with executive functioning and being able to be a successful human being, is actually developed through things like play. And there was a study, that is one of my favorite things to share with parents, that two schools were looked at, one that students were provided play experiences, and one that were not, was not, and initially, the school that was more academic-based had, like you would expect, academic results, but by the time the students were in third grade, the results flipped, and the students who had more play experiences in preschool actually were better readers through the rest of their career, because of that foundation that is created. So, my thing is, we're more than just four K. When people say it's just four K, it's actually much more than that. Thank you.
I am Danielle Ernstur, and I teach first grade, and I'm going to speak to just a couple of the things our first graders are doing whole group through the Wonders ELA curriculum. One of the things we've worked on thus far is building anchor charts, so we introduce many different genres of text. Some of them up there that we've done so far are nursery rhymes, fairy tales, realistic fiction, fantasy, and nonfiction. And when we introduce a new genre of text, we create an anchor chart together with the students. So, we're coming up with the different features of each of those types of texts, and then when we read new texts, we're looking at those charts, deciding what features that text has, and putting it into that genre. Another thing we are doing whole group is using specific academic language or vocabulary, such as text evidence. So, first graders are reading different texts, we are going back to the text to answer a question, we're finding the exact page number it's on, so that we have support for our answer, and we're doing that through lots of different genres of text. So, very different things that we're doing whole group in Wonders.
Hi, I'm Jackie Farady, I'm the reading specialist at County Line, and that gives me the privilege of getting to be in all the classrooms, kindergarten through fifth grade, K four through fifth grade, thanks, Jan. So, something that I really appreciate about that is, I get a chance not only to see how the curriculum builds upon itself throughout the school year, but also when we think about our kiddos moving through our K four through fifth grade system. So, just for one little example of this, in our grammar lessons, all of the kids at County Line were learning about nouns within the same week of each other. So, in kindergarten, they were very appropriately just introducing the basics of what a noun is. In second grade, during that same week, they were talking about possessive nouns and using apostrophes to show how that looks, and then, fifth grade was talking about nouns and prepositional phrases. So, this is just one of those things that's important, as we think about our kids building their knowledge and deepening those skills every year as they move throughout our system.
All right, so as you can see, it's really a collective effort, it's a collaborative effort, and we're very lucky here at County Line to have such a great school community. So, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight to show us off.
This was a, I think this was the best camp Uppam, Uppam Woods presentation I've seen. So, between the visuals, you know, the photos, I don't know that the rest of the board has seen all of this either. You know, we didn't know about necessarily all the learning activities and things that were going on, so this was really, really impressive. Also, I'd like to thank the parents for bringing all their students on this rainy evening tonight, where you'd probably just as soon stay home and stay inside. So, anyway, students, you did a great job. It's a great practice for reading and public presentations. I usually mention at this time, when I was in fifth grade or less, I would have been scared out of my mind to speak to the school board. So, what you found tonight is that the school board actually doesn't bite or anything. We're actually real nice people, and you all did a good job, so thank you for presenting. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Just wanted to say thank you. Students, you did a fantastic job letting us see kind of a window into your experience at the camp retreat. Staff for taking them and mentoring them in that process, that's fantastic. I know that's time out of your lives for that, and then also being here tonight, I do think this is one of our better school presentations we've received. It really helps to see that, that follow-through on Wonders. We talked a lot of theoretical conversations about what it can mean for the district when making that decision through Jake's guidance and staff guidance, but to see that end result, or the beginning of those processes play forward is, is, is great for us, great feedback to see. So, thank you, and thank you for taking the time tonight to come. Anyone else? Thank you. We will go to D, Spring Election Update. Ms. Timmerman.
Hello. Just wanted to give a little, some information on the upcoming spring election for school board members. It will be Tuesday, April first, two thousand twenty-five. We currently have three seats that will be up for election, seat number two, which is Mr. Russ Ewer, seat number four, which is Mr. Brian Medved, and seat number six, which is Mr. Michael Loth. The election, election notice has been provided to the Washington County Daily News and will be published on Friday, November twenty-second. Candidate packets will be available for pickup at the district office, starting Tuesday, November twenty-sixth. If anybody wants to pick one up, they should ask for me, I will have them ready. The deadline, candidate deadline for filing all ballot access documents is Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, by five P. M. The district office on Donjust Bay will be open until five P. M. to accept those ballot access documents. And then, election information will be available on the Germantown School District website, beginning Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, and then, any updates as the election process continues will be posted there as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Item E, Village Germantown Planning Commission Report, and that is myself, let me click over here. So, the, as the representative for the board on the planning commission, I attended November eleventh meeting, six thirty, at the Village Hall. The following items were discussed in various facets. Passed was a Phase Two of the Warren Woods subdivision for twenty-six single-family homes located near Frystat and Pleasant View. They postponed discussion on the One Energy Solo Farm development located near the Rockfield Elementary School. I believe they were waiting, the town of Germantown was having a meeting in regards to that in the same evening, and they wanted to allow them to have input and see how that meeting turned out before reviewing that proposal any further. Denied as presented was the Herders Lakeside Disposal Development located at Fond du Lac and Spatten Court. Passed was text amendments to municipal codes seventeen point four one, accessory use and building, building and structures, seventeen four three, site plan approval requirements, seventeen forty-five, traffic parking, loading and access, and seventeen forty-six signs. Passed with modifications were two wall signs for the Relish Supper Club located on Main Street. Passed was zoning application for two residential single-family homes to place fences along their property lines. And passed was approval for a site plan deadline extension request for the property owners of West one four zero N one zero three six three Fond du Lac Avenue, that's the property located south of the coffee shop and roundabout near district office. With that, I have no further. Unless anyone has questions on any of that. Let's see, none. We will move on to citizen comment. It looks like I have seven people signed up for comment. I'll just ask, as, I'll read two names at once, and as you hear it, just come to the mic. We are going to read the citizen comment directions. Community members and residents of the Germantown School District are invited to share their questions, comments, or concerns with the school board. When speaking, citizens should state their name and address for the record. The presentation timeframe shall be determined by the board president. Once an indication of number of people wishing to speak is made, speakers should keep comments to three minutes or less to allow for others to speak. Wisconsin law authorizes the school board to receive information from the members of the public. Where possible, the board may answer factual questions immediately, or provide written response if information is not available. If a response would involve discussion of board policy for discussions which might be of interest to citizens not present at the meeting, the board may place the item on future meeting agendas. Comments may be, comments that may be of interest to school, district personnel, or other individuals will, will not be allowed. So, with that, I think we should be able to get to all seven of these, if we stick to that three-minute time limit. Dr. Reuter, I think you'll have that. Okay, thank you. So, I have Lucy Schmidt and Linda Pans, I want to say, it's hard to read. Signed up in that order, but then it says one, two, in reverse order, so if you two want to figure out who's going first there, please come on down and state your name and address.
My name is Lydia Paul, and my address is N one one five W.
I'll just ask as, I'll read two names at once, and as you hear it, just come to the mic. We are gonna read the citizen comment directions. Community members and residents of the Germantown School District are invited to share their questions, comments, or concerns with the school board. When speaking, citizens should state their name and address for the record. The presentation timeframe shall be determined by the board president. Once an indication of number of people wishing to speak is made, speakers should keep comments to three minutes or less to allow for others to speak. Wisconsin law authorizes the school board to receive information from the members of the public. Where possible, the board may answer factual questions immediately or provide written response if information is not available. If a response would involve discussion of board policy for discussions which might be of interest to citizens not present at the meeting, the board may place the item on future meeting agendas. Comments may be, comments that may be of interest to school, district personnel, or other individuals will not be allowed. So with that, I think we should be able to get to all seven of these if we stick to that three-minute time limit. Dr. Reuter, I think you'll have that. Okay, thank you. So I have Lucy Schmidt and Linda Pans, I want to say. It's hard to read. Signed up in that order, but then it says one, two, in reverse order. So if you two want to figure out who's going first there, please come on down and state your name and address.
My name is Lydia Paul and my address is N 115 W 1975 H Shadowwood Court in Germantown. So my name is Lydia Paul and I'm a senior at GHS. Recently, the Germantown Community Coalition statement highlighted the school board's decision to instruct the high school's sexual and gender equality advisor to remove educational materials and a book from his classroom. These materials were created by Sage students in line with school policy and approved by the Activities and Athletics Director. Despite this, a parent's complaint led to their removal citing district property policy but ignoring the nondiscrimination policy in the GHS code of conduct. I'm here today to support the Sage students and advisor and to call for a review of this harmful decision. I'm deeply involved in school activities and I love our school, but we must address the lack of support for the LGBTQIA community. These students are facing intimidation and discrimination in a place that should be a safe space for all. As stated in the student handbook, every student has a right to freedom from verbal abuse, harassment, or intimidation. The removal of these materials constitutes intimidation as it sends a message that students' identities are not welcome, making them feel unsafe and threatened. The handbook also asserts that each student has the right to express opinions and beliefs as long as it does not disrupt the school's operation. These materials do not disrupt anything. They are simply a reflection of the diverse identities at GHS. It is the removing them that harms students. What if a parent complained about educational posters on anarchisms, cultural celebrations, or religion? Those are displayed around the school. It seems the board is selectively enforcing policies based on personal or political biases. On behalf of many students, I ask that you reconsider this decision without political or personal bias, ensure all students have access to diverse educational materials, and foster a school climate that is inclusive for everyone. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lucy Schmitz and my address is W 214 N 10351 Oak Lane in Colgate, Wisconsin. So hi, my name is Lucy Schmitz. I'm a junior at Germantown High School and I'm here to speak in support of Sage students and the advisor and to advocate for LGBTQ+ rights in our school community alongside Lydia. So as a student involved in many leadership roles, including the student council and principal's cabinet, I firsthand seen the positive impact of inclusivity at our school. Germantown should be a place where all students feel valued and safe regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. The recent removal of the Pride Hero posters following a parent's complaint is not just an act of censorship, it's a violation of the dignity of our LGBTQ+ peers. LGBTQ+ youth are at a significantly higher risk for mental health struggles. According to the Trevor's Project 2023 survey, 41% of LGBTQ+ youth are seriously considering suicide last year, and half of transgender and non-binary youth were affected. In Wisconsin, nearly 1 in 10 teens attempted suicide last year. These statistics are a stark reminder of the harm that exclusion and discrimination can cause, and actions like this only further isolate and silence students who already face significant challenges. Our school district's own student handbook clearly states that all students are entitled to equal educational opportunities and that no student can be discriminated against based on their sexual orientation. Removing these posters is a direct violation of that policy. I don't know if it is the school board's intent to silence LGBTQ+ history in our school, but what I do know is that these actions send a message that our school district is not welcoming to all. This year has already been difficult with several incidents involving teachers and staff that have harmed our school's reputation. Now the LGBTQ+ community is again being targeted. The district must ask itself, how would we respond if this were any other group, whether it be religious, racial, or anything else? I commend Mr. Smith for his efforts to create a safe and welcoming environment for all students by creating groups like principal's cabinet, but I urge the school board to reconsider its stance and prioritize the well-being of every student, including the LGBTQ+ youth. The school district's mission is to provide equal opportunity and support for all students. Actions like this undermine that mission and harm our school community. Thank you.
Sharon Kiernan and Jennifer Grinky. I apologize for pronunciation, but please come down if you're still intending to speak.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sharon Kiernan. Do I need to say my address and everything? West 216 North 14143 Springside Lane, Richfield. Thank you. Kudos to the two young ladies who just spoke. Very courageous and just really wonderful. I'd like to build on what they said by saying my, my two girls went to Germantown. We have loved it here. We've lived in the area for 30 years. We're proud to be part of the community. A concern that I have is what they expressed. On top of that, the idea that the Germantown High School portrait of a graduate, I just went online tonight and was looking at, you know, updated things since my kids went here quite a while ago, is intended to exemplify the dispositions and experiences our school community hopes to instill in all of its graduates. So when I think about dispositions and experiences, I saw quite a bit online about experiences, meaning the what, the content, right? I guess the concern I have at this point is what these young ladies spoke to, which is the dispositions. What are we doing here as a community so that all of our students leave ready to cooperate and communicate and collaborate with others who might not be the same as them? What happens when one of our graduates gets a job at GE and they find out that their boss is queer? Because queer people have always been here, they will always be here. We have a responsibility to make sure that we are instilling in all of our young people the dispositions of inclusivity and not otherizing people. By taking down things that advocate for equity and inclusion, we are giving a green light to our young people to go bully others. And we are not teaching them, we are doing them a disservice for what they're going to encounter in the real world because the real world is a diverse place. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Genke. I live at W 147 North 9869 Rimrock Road. I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts on the removal of both the student-created posters and the book, The Queer Bible, from the classroom. I am aware that this has already happened and will not be changed. I would like to state for the community and the board that book banning is bad. Suppressing people groups is bad. A very important part of learning is being able to think about, discuss, and hold space for an idea that is counter to our own ideas or makes us uncomfortable. That space allows us to be civil to one another and to learn from each other. I would request that both in the review of this decision and contemplating future similar choices, the board and the community would put personal discomfort, beliefs, and politics aside to make choices that reflect the desire to provide a learning resource, opportunity, and environment for the entire diverse population of all of the schools and not just a select sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Cara Brandle and Melissa Garvis. Oh, sorry. It is Cara Brandle, I believe, and Melissa Garvis.
Hello, my name is Cara Brandle. I live at West 199 North 11286 Rosewood Court in Germantown. I'm here tonight as a community member and as a former Germantown School District teacher. I taught at Amy Bell School for 16 years and worked there for 22 years. I'm here to show support for the students in the LGBTQ community and the Sage group. I believe that school is supposed to prepare kids for the world, to be citizens of the world, to help students learn that the world is not made up of people who only look like you, who only think like you, and love the way that you love, to make friends and to see that their friends' families may look different than their own families. School is often the first place where children learn that there is diversity in the world. And all students deserve to have their school community be a reflection of themselves and their own lives. No student deserves to be made to feel that who they are cannot be presented proudly within their own school building. My hope is that the board would never suppress a student's voice when they are simply sharing their learning and that the board is not targeting their implementation of policy against the Sage group or any group. I ask the board to review their decision and ensure that policies are implemented across the board in an equitable way with no political bias. I do, however, have concerns because I have seen on the Germantown High School Facebook page examples of other student clubs that have personalized the halls with student work. One example is the EWS group, the Emerging Women Salon. Both of my students, my children, attended Germantown High School. They were both part of the EWS group. It's a great group. But they have something on the Germantown High School Facebook page where they have a wall of women, wall of women display in the hallway. Is that not personalizing the hallway, personalizing the building? I'm wondering whether they were required to take their displays down or not. I don't know the answer to that, maybe you do. There are other examples online as well that are out there for everyone to see and, you know, it's right there. So I'm just asking you to reconsider the decision that you made and just think about the children as they are part of this greater world beyond Germantown. There is a saying that I heard recently, and I do think it is true. Be careful who you discriminate against, it might be someone that you love.
My name is Melissa Garvis, W 215 N 10115. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Germantown Community Coalition Board of Directors to read our public statement into the record. Germantown Community Coalition is committed to building a safe, welcoming community based on the principles of kindness, inclusion, equity, and respect. It is with this commitment in mind that we address a recent decision made by the Germantown School Board that impacts not only the inclusivity of our educational environment but also the equitable treatment of all students and staff. GCC was made aware that the high school's sexual and gender equality advisor was instructed to remove educational materials from his classroom, specifically 10 student-created Pride Month hero posters and a book. Created by student members of Sage and displayed in the classroom to show exemplary student work in terms of research and visual design. These posters had been previously approved by the Activities and Athletics Director and were displayed in accordance with school policy in May and June. The book titled The Queer Bible is an anthology of essays on queer people in Western media and culture. The book was available on the classroom bookshelf as a resource to interested students but is not required reading or optional supplemental material for any course. The removal was initiated after a complaint by one parent and subsequently enforced by the school board, citing a policy against personalizing district property unless it is directly tied to board-approved curriculum and district-prioritized standards. It appears this policy is being selectively applied, which raises questions about whether this action is truly about adhering to policy or an attempt to suppress educational materials that represent and affirm the LGBTQ+ community. We urge the school board to take the following actions. Review its decision and ensure that all policies are applied evenly and without personal or political bias. Consult with school administration and teachers as part of its decision-making process. Ensure students have access to educational materials that reflect the diversity of our community. Be transparent and communicate with teachers, staff, students, and the community about decisions it makes out of view from public meetings. We also encourage all members of our community to engage in open, respectful dialogue about these issues. At GCC, we will continue to advocate for a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment for all members of the community. We hope to see the school board reconsider its decision and encourage a dialogue that includes students, educators, and community members about how educational materials can be inclusive without being deemed controversial.
Your time's expired.
GCC is ready to assist in facilitating these conversations and finding a resolution that honors both the policy and the spirit of inclusivity and respect.
Brad Sherrick, W 147 N 10734 Heritage Parkway. I'm here to speak as a parent in the district and a concerned citizen. And I'd like to speak about the removal of educational materials from the Sage advisor classroom. Much to the chagrin of the single parent who reported this, LGBTQ kids exist. They exist and they deserve to not be ashamed of who they are. The action taken at your discretion is telling these kids and anyone else paying attention that it's in everybody's best interest that we not face the facts of their existence. We're telling them to take their existence and put it back in the closet. I wish I could say that I was surprised by this, but I'm not. It's pretty much par for the course these days. I'm here sharing my thoughts, not because I'm surprised, but because I continue to be disappointed by the leadership of this district. The district's mission statement says that you will, quote, "empower and inspire every student to success." Every student. This should include not only lifting up every student, but not selectively pushing some down. If this action is representative of the Germantown way, the district will never achieve its vision of being the premier district in the state. Thank you.
I was just asking the superintendent in regards to some of the facts cited by the speakers and correcting maybe potentially some of the inaccuracies of them, but we'll address that at a different time.
Yep. I'm happy to reach out to anyone that spoke a community comment this week to clarify what I can about what transpired with the request to remove those items.
I think we can as well, as president of the board, myself, Chris, potentially could meet with the principal, the advisor, and members of the group and have a further discussion on it. But unfortunately, we can't go beyond, I guess, that at this time. So, thank you. Item five, consent agenda, approval of October 21st, 2024 meeting minutes. That is item A. Item B, approval of teacher contracts. Item C, approval of donations. Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, but would ask Dr. Reuter to read the list of donations.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Who is the second? Mr. Brown? Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second, and that motion did include breaking out the donations.
Yep. We would like to thank, excuse me, this evening MacArthur PTA with the donation of $2,178.66 for MacArthur Elementary, 5K and first-grade field trips. County Line PTA for $1,370.22, I believe Ms. Schultz, this is for the fifth-grade Uppen Woods field trip that was presented this evening. We had an anonymous donor of $437.50 that went towards our Germantown High School choir. Last month, I reported that we had a great Last month, I reported that we had a great fundraiser, dollar amount, from Jersey Mike's of over $3,000. They did some more math and realized there's another $1,152.23 that is being donated based on the student and faculty fundraiser that we partnered with, so we thank them for the additional funds. And the Kiwanis Club of Germantown donated $500 to our high school robotics team. Thank you to our donors.
Yeah, it's amazing. Every, every month we come in and the list is long.
Yep, and large.
Yes.
Dollar amounts, yeah.
Thank you again. Any other converse or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. We will move on to item six, Teaching and Learning Committee. Ms. Higginbotham.
The Teaching and Learning Committee met on Monday, November 4th. The meeting began with updates from Jake Mizziak and Katie Cole on the October 25th In-Service Day. The elementary teachers were split into four sessions. They were able to work with the Wonders Trainer in order to help with the implementation of wonders and the effective use of data on student progress. Kelly Schultz, County Line Principal, gave some training on Act 20 involving strategies that focus on oral reading fluency. Another session focused on Ames Web Screener, which would help identify at-risk learners in 4K through 3, to determine if a personalized plan would be needed. Finally, teachers were able to collaborate with other colleagues by grade level. The 6th through 12 teachers were split into departments in order to work on the vertical alignment and the prioritization of standards. All teachers at every grade level were given an overview on the supplemental materials policy. 6th through 12 special ed teachers worked on standard prioritization and were able to collaborate on writing IEPs according to those standards. At the elementary level, speech pathologists, early childhood, and 4K teachers involved in special ed receive specific training on COSAF, which is a child outcome survey form. There's an indicator form from DPI for special education that focuses on the progress made by three-to-five-year-olds on their IEPs. This process includes an entry reading and an exit reading once they age out. ACISA-1, Early Childhood Implementation Specialist, was present to go over the processes and make sure teachers involved in filling out form understood the exit criteria. The work continues to bring clarity, consistency, and uniformity in developing IEPs for our special ed students. Next on the agenda was a three-year school library plan. The meeting was joined by Jeff Schreiber from GHS and Aaron Gaskell from KMS. Wisconsin State statutes dictate that all school districts shall have a board-approved library plan. Wisconsin DPI provides a future-ready framework that lays a foundation in which the districts can build out a structure for a long-range library plan. An extensive conversation revolved around the multiple facets of the plan and how it currently impacts the districts and our future goals. Through the plan, the district identified there was a gap in digital resources for K through 5 students, and in order to close that gap, the district approved the SORA Digital Library in 2024. Four access levels were identified as early elementary, upper elementary, middle school, and high school in order to maintain age-appropriate materials for students. Looking ahead, the plan looks to continue collection development and expansion. This will include a collective review process in which will weigh factors such as curriculum relativity, actual usage, interests, age appropriateness, and diversity of collection. The review process will align with district policies and goals. We thank Jeff and Aaron for their continued work in maintaining and building of collection that is equally accessed by students and continues to strive to be a rich resource for both staff and students, that supports student curriculum and interest in order to nurture our love of reading. The plan will come to the full board most likely in December for approval. The committee was then able to forward two items onto the Finance Committee. The first is a DreamBox renewal, which is up for its first renewal. DreamBox is a computer adaptive online platform the district uses for developing and challenging students' math skills for our K through 5. DreamBox can align to bridges in our current math curriculum and is available for use at school or while at home. The committee also forwarded a recommendation to approve the purchase of eight Gateway Custom Kits and eight Gateway Custom Upgrade Kits to support our Gateway Automation and Project Lead the Way at KMS. The current kits are outdated at more than 10 years and require a computer upgrade for continued use. These kits are non-consumable and is therefore a one-time purchase until at some point they too would become outdated. Finally, the committee discussed the proposal to add lifeguarding to CAP at the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh. CAP is a cooperative academic partnership program and allows students to receive college credits applicable at all UW system schools, two-year colleges, and approximately 200 additional colleges and universities. It would join courses in environmental science and Spanish courses already in the program. Where the outcomes of the current PE 361 lifeguard training will remain the same, students will now be able to receive college credits. I'd like to thank the teachers who have initiated and also currently support courses in this program. With that, we will bring to the board with a positive recommendation to approve PE 361 lifeguard training with the opportunity for a CAP credit.
That comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Mr. Lo.
We have a teacher that's qualified to teach that in our school?
Yes, Stephanie Milmo is a certified instructor for that course.
Okay, very good. That's all I had.
Good, thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. And I believe that's it. Teaching and Learning, thank you. Item seven, Finance Committee. Mr. Lo.
Yes, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:15 PM, November 18th, 2024. This is the Cliff's Notes version. If you're interested in more detail, you can see the video that'll be posted after Full Board Item 7A, Committee Update. We approved the November vouchers. Full Board Item 7B, this was the purchase of eighth-grade math tables, and I was quite serious when I said the math tables got expensive until I read the rest of the material. These are four-legged tables for math class and not related to multiplication tables or division tables. So, motion to approve with a positive recommendation to the Full Board of Education to approve the purchase of 64 tables in an amount not to exceed $15,527.68 out of the general fund.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
Okay, next item is Full Board Item 7C, PLTW Project Lead the Way Gateway Custom and Upgrade Kits. Ms. Higginbotham just covered this, so I won't read any more material on it. We, recommendation to the Full Board to approve the purchase of PLTW Gateway Custom and Upgrade Kits for an amount not to exceed $22,440. The purchase of PLTW supplies would come from a combination of funds budgeted for the Kennedy Middle School, the Teaching and Learning Budget, and from the Career Technical Education CTE incentive grant.
That comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
Okay, next item is Full Board Item 7D, DreamBox Renewal. We'll get right into it. Recommendation to provide a positive recommendation to the Full Board to approve the purchase of DreamBox learning for an amount not to exceed $19,200. The purchase of DreamBox would come from Common School Funds.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
Okay, the last item is Full Board Item 7E, Cyber Security. I commented in Finance Committee that it's unfortunate we need to spend the funds equal to or greater than some teachers' salaries, but unfortunately, in this day and age, with cybersecurity issues all around us, we need to do what we need to do to keep our records safe. So we'll get right into it. Motion to bring forward to the Full Board of Education with a positive recommendation from, for the amount, or from the Finance Committee, to purchase the Forward Edge Expel Cybersecurity Services for the amount not to exceed $50,094 annually from the general fund.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
And that was it for the Finance Committee. We adjourned at 6:39 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Lo.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say thank you to the two committees, Teaching and Learning and Finance, for working in conjunction with each other, teaching and learning on vetting the materials, many of what you approved the dollars for and through your committee. I think that eased the discussion there, and then definitely eased it here at the Full Board, so thank you for that. We'll move on. Item eight, New Business Discussion, eight, A Discussion and Action to Approve the Germantown School District Strategic Planning Process. Dr. Chris Reuter.
Thank you. As you see outlined in your board packet this evening, I'm proposing approval this evening from the board regarding a three-year strategic plan process. We are doing a lot of great work in this district aligned to Teaching and Learning through Finance, through all of our committees, and I think it's time for this district to prioritize and think strategically about the great work and put a plan in place with stakeholder feedback, a review of data, and determine where we want to go in the next three years, and how we're going to get there, and how we're going to measure our success around that. I spoke about that in my original interview with you as a board, as well as through multiple board meetings and one-on-ones, and I think we owe it to this community to set that roadmap and that course with those objectives and goals outlined, and I've laid out here over the next four months, five months, a process that I will give updates monthly on, on the development of and actions in this process, so that hopefully by the end of the academic year into the spring of March, that it's approved by the board, and essentially, those would be the goals of the district moving forward the next three years. And I would work with my administrative team, both at the district level, building level, and then that would cascade down to the teacher level in order to achieve those goals, progress monitor those goals, to make sure we're successful as a school district, probably through the three lanes of learning, employee, employee engagement, and community. So I've kind of laid those focus areas out here, and how we'll go about gathering feedback and information, so that we can make that feedback and information actionable and strategic for the next three years.
Fantastic. Does anyone have questions regarding the information provided? I'd just like to add to Dr. Reuter's information he's providing us tonight. He and I have had several conversations around this, and with, with the facilities you study, that the Buildings and Grounds Committee is running, as well as some of the direction this district's going, similar to Approval of Wonders, it's going to affect the district, district-wide. I think there's no better time than to implement a strategic planning process, and as, as usual, Dr. Reuter's brought forward a very thoughtful, thorough, planned-out, timeline-based, data-driven process that I think we can lean into and help guide this district into the future. A couple of the key things that, in our discussions, was how would we get feedback? How do we go about that? What groups? Well, obviously, staff, students, community members, that's family, as well as community members that aren't within the schools, whether it's business or just members of our community, businesses as well. Key here, too, I think, is the student voice in the process as well. We need to see what they're experiencing as they come through, and what they were hoping they would experience, or hoping what the next generations of students could experience. So I think that's an important part of this process, so I appreciate that information being included in here. If nobody else has any questions, like I said, I'm just going to have my full support as really setting a direction, not only for the board, for district administration, from our building staff, our support staff, our certified staff. This is really going to give us an anchor and a guide pole to go to, so thank you for that work, and thank you for the continued work. Nobody else has anything else in regards to that, I will entertain a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve the Germantown School District Strategic Planning Timeline and Actions to Begin in November 2024.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Lo.
I'd like to thank Dr. Reuter for thinking ahead. He's fantastic at these things, and it's why we hired him. He's doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, this is much needed, just like the facilities review. That's going to be a ton of work. Teaching and Learning has already done a ton of work reviewing curriculum, and will continue that, but, but this, we need to establish a vision, and, and I think this is a good first step. The timeliness of it with the facilities piece, obviously, do kind of go hand-in-hand, but I also think, and I'm kind of reiterating what Russ said, participation has got to be key. You know, everybody is a stakeholder in this community to participate, so I'm hopeful that when we do have any sort of community meetings, even board meetings, Buildings and Grounds, whatever meetings that may imply, or have an impact on, people need to participate if they can.
Anyone else? I would agree that participation part, right, we can open up the timelines for that to occur, but we need the participation. Otherwise, it's, can be a lonely room at times. So hopefully, we get the, the response, I think we will, and we will continue to move forward under Dr. Reuter's leadership with this. Thank you again. If there's no further discussion, and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item B, Discussion and Action to Approve Ad-Hoc Transportation Committee. Mr. Myself and Ms. Brittany Alton Dorff. Apparently, I have something to say about this. Our contract's up, and it's time to review the process in which we get our kids from home to school.
Sure. Our contract is up at the end of this fiscal year. I did complete a draft RFP that I will get feedback from whoever's on the ad hoc committee, and I've also reached out to eight different transportation companies to see if they're interested in going through the transportation RFP process with us. The goal would be to send out the RFP on December 19th, and then come to full board for approval either in March or April.
Sounds good. So we need to, A, approve the committee, but not the members, but I would definitely take any volunteers that would step forward.
Yeah, per policy, the board votes on creating an ad hoc committee that would dissolve at the completion of the committee's work, but in the case of tonight's meeting, it's to approve the committee, and I would suggest anyone who's interested in serving on that committee to filter that information through Mr. Ewer.
I think the, the key in why we're going to move forward with the ad hoc committee on this is there, there is situations within the community and within our schools that, that we've heard concerns about, so there's some work beyond an RFP, and just, this is the price that we get for this. There's some logistic planning involved that could affect the district, but the key is to explore all those options, and the best way to do that is through a committee and not at the full board level.
So I'll look forward to hearing some people, probably three, would be my guess, volunteer for that.
I think the purpose of an ad hoc committee is to show the transparency of how we get to the end result with the best interest of the students, the community, and our fiscal responsibility, and versus pushing this through Finance and just having a, here's like we did, what we do with other things where it goes straight to Finance and it's vetted internally. To your point, Mr. Ewer, there are, I hear it all the time, from specific schools of start time, end time, number of bus routes, all those things, but we have to take that into totality when making a huge decision, like three years of to take that into totality when making a huge decision, like three years of transportation for 3,900 children.
Absolutely. So, we'll look forward to the members of that committee and the process they push forward with. In regards to that, I would say I think there's plenty of opinions up here in regards to what could, should, or potentially the manner in which it's discussed in that committee. I'm not going to weigh in and direct that from this position. We'll find out who steps forward to volunteer for that. No one's looking at me. Avoid the eye contact. The work will get done. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, and I'm on the wrong page here. Make a motion to approve the formulation of an ad hoc transportation committee to review the RFPs and make a recommendation to the Finance Committee and full board for future transportation services for the students of the Germantown School District.
Second.
Mr. Brown with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Mr. Loth.
We've always had a transportation committee in the past, so I don't know. I was just trying to find the list here to see.
Per, per policy, there was an ad hoc committee previously, but per policy, it's not one of our maintained committees. So, in order to reformulate the group, we have to have board approval.
Okay. I, I do not recall the term ad hoc being on that committee.
Okay.
You know, I thought it was a established committee.
It's, it's not outlined in policy as an established committee.
Okay, so policy?
Policy's driving tonight's decision, yeah.
It changed somewhere along the line?
Most likely.
I don't think at the beginning of this year, I didn't assign anybody to an ad hoc transportation committee or transportation committee.
Yeah, well, in the past, it was just the transportation.
Transportation, yeah, correct, that's what I'm saying, but I don't think in, in the spring, I don't think we.
It didn't meet often, you know, it would have met at a time like this. Brittany, do you remember anything about that?
Sure, the last time we met was in regards to the start and end time change.
Okay.
For some of the sites.
It was the last contract?
That was the last time the Transportation Committee met.
In regards to the contract and?
Correct.
In, in the past, I chaired it, and in the more recent past, I, I was just a member of it. So, I guess I'm surprised it's converted into an ad hoc, but that's fine, you know, if that's what it is in policy. No, it's not a committee that met monthly or by any means, so I think ad hoc's a good designator for it.
Sure.
Any further discussion?
Are you looking for volunteers tonight, or do you want them to reach out to you and contact you before December 19th?
I would reach out in the next couple of days, as best we can. I can get that information to Dr. Reuter and Ms. Alton Dorff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Eight, C, Discussion and Action to Approve Additional Hourly Advising Positions, Winter Coaching Contracts, and Destination Imagination Contracts. Mr. Noah.
Thank you. We bring forward a request for additional hourly advising positions for Kennedy Middle School, as well as the additional attached winter coaching contracts for GHS and KMS, and district-wide destination imagination contracts to occur for the, during the 24, 25 school year. Just quick clarification, the coaching contracts are, in most cases, they're contracts that have come through very recently. We're happy that people have stepped up to fill positions. They are as, as you see in the document.
Any questions? I guess I'll actually, take a, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hourly advising positions, winter coach positions, and destination imagination positions as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second. Now, I'll open it up for discussion. I have a question on additional, just the language additional. Are we, are there groups that have expanded and we're adding advisors or new groups that were?
These are positions that haven't been filled from previous approvals. So, there were positions that were approved, now we're filling those that weren't.
Okay, so it's no additional?
No.
I just wondered if we had groups that were wildly successful and we were needing more mentors or advisors, I should say, in those positions. I do appreciate the formatting again, I know we had asked for this, I think, the last time around and had it, but to see the employee yes, no, and it's not a qualifier, disqualifier, it's just nice to see how many outside people from our community are involved, how many inside the district are involved beyond the educational hours. It's just a nice piece of information for us to see on these seats. So, thank you for including that.
Yeah, in the, in the case of the coaches, five of the six are teachers who have stepped up, and it's greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
Move to item nine, Close Session. A 9A, Motion to Enter into Closed Session Pursuit to Wisconsin State Statutes, 1, 19.581, sub 1, sub D, to Consider Strategy for Crime Detection and Prevention, A, School Safety. 2, 1980.1, point 85, sub 1, sub G, to Confer with the Board's Legal Counsel, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the Board with respect to litigation in which it is, or is, is or is likely to become involved, a legal matter. 3, 19.85, sub 1, sub C, to Consider the Employment Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of Any Employee, a personal matter. And 4, 19.85, sub 1, sub E, to Deliberate or Negotiate the Purchase of Public Properties, the Investment of District Funds, or, or the Conduct of Other Board Business, whenever approved, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Ewer?
Yes.
Brown, yes. Barney excused, absent. Loth?
Yes.
Medved excused, absent. Pollak?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes.
With that, we are in close at 8:18 PM. I believe there's no plan to come out of close, so please drive safe. Thank you for attending.